We have a lot to talk about the calendar and I think you want to do a little wrap up on it tonight. We do have a consent agenda. I guess just kind of a reminder, this year's calendar, really, nearly a minor, major, however you want to look at changes. The middle of the Tuesday afternoon fair, that's coming back to me in the morning school day. And do good to apps. Uh, one thing that we came back and revisit, seems like older releases are released Wednesday. And Dustin sent me an email to read to you tonight, so I'm going to go ahead and read it to you. And then we can discuss that. Will, I will not be able to attend the board meeting on the 10th. Want to provide some input on the calendar, I'm in support of early release days, however, I'd prefer to see that Friday versus Wednesday. When we implemented ERW, it was a trial and we're going to revisit it, however, after first year, there's been minimal willingness to try anything different. However, this is the biggest area of feedback I hear from parents. Going to an early release Friday, your listening sessions have identified some areas of concern and it is all anecdotal. Absenteeism was cited, in my opinion, the one thing we can prove this is with a four day school week. In the absence of that, I don't believe we have any evidence to suggest that going from early release Wednesday to early release Friday will have any impact. I think it's worth giving early release Friday a chance and document the impacts of that. Subcosts recited again, in my opinion, there's a way to address the implementation of a four day week. Again, I feel there's no evidence to suggest this will change with an early release Friday. Or we should try it for a year, early release Friday to track the impact. Coaching staff, I had Chris Rose pull up some numbers on coaches out of thirty eight, EMS, LHS coaches, only seven are teachers. These teachers coach for one season and expect, except for two who coached two seasons. We've heard of the four day week discussion, only football and basketball really are the ones that have regular Friday games. Therefore, the early release Friday would be minimally impacted by coaches. Even the Friday game, unless it's away, the coaches should be able to attend. Staff level of energy, my counter to this is the staff don't have energy to attend professional development on Friday afternoon. Then do they have the energy to be teaching our students? We aren't asking staff to work any longer hours than they do now, or just asking to attend professional development instead of teaching in the classroom. In summary, I support early release for professional development, however, I do not support early release Wednesday. Without trying early release Friday, or at least having a sound argument against it. I do not feel that arguments against early release Friday are adequate without some sound examples of data. Therefore, I do not support the calendar and its current configuration. I prefer to see us try early release Friday for a year, or be willing to try it for just half a year. Call if you want to discuss. Uh, I got back, we emailed each other back and forth, I told him, out of respect and courtesy, I wouldn't read this to you tonight. And here you go from there, so anyhow. So I don't know where to head from here, if you want to pull that app, talk about that, or you know, something else in regard to the school year calendars you'd like to discuss. I think the thing, last meeting where we left off, we agreed that the four day school week, unless we have a year to really sit down and have a committee and plan that out. You know, we're not worked with this short of notice. Uh, I did provide you in that white paper statement, I gave you kind of a, a plan as far as, you know, how that would go month by month and everything else. Should we decide to do that in the year twenty twenty one, so anyway. And of course, I provided all the, the pieces from the principals and, and my survey from the staff in regard to early release Wednesday, so. So there you have it, your turn.
Well, personally, I would rather have early release Friday. And now it's gotten where, for me as an unorganized parent, Logan takes care of himself. So when he randomly used to show up or wonder if I was coming to get him on Wednesdays, I'm kind of past that. Cause it's really hard in the middle of your day to contemplate that it's Wednesday and you have to do something an hour earlier. But I don't, I don't have anxiety either way.
I've heard from the staff, and it is their professional development day that they prefer the Wednesday.
Well, and I actually preferred when they have the whole day.
The whole day off?
Yeah, and I know that there's been comments from the teachers as to why they didn't like that. It just seems to me like you could actually get more accomplished instead of having, you know, you get set up to do what you're going to do and you have such a short window to get that accomplished.
They're coming back to it over long gaps versus weekly, that's, at least that's what I've heard, if you want to chime in with them, but.
I think that's the bigger issue is that as far as the time that we have in our classes on the early release Wednesday, it's seven minutes shorter. So you adjust your lesson plan seven minutes, that in itself is not huge at, at all. The factor of being able to come back sooner and do little pieces more often is better. You, you remember it better, you're able to take those little pieces and put that into your classroom quicker. Um, when it's eight hours that you're listening to, um, you know, it's harder than to take little pieces of that, huge big hole. And, and go implement that right away. Um, that takes a lot more time to digest and to figure out how you're going to implement that eight hours worth of information into your classroom. But when you have an hour where you're maybe looking at data, you're looking at training to implement a new strategy. You, um, you are much easier able to put that in, you know, next week I'm doing this and I could do that strategy right there. Um, and it's short, it's quick, it's not, um, again, that eight hours that I have to figure out how I'm going to make all of this be useful. Um, and that's when we do trainings, that's when we look at data. But then we have more consistent and more time for staff meetings. Sometimes staff meetings are, are fairly short, you know, they're thirty minutes. Other times, there's a lot on the agenda and I, I have never, I mean, I'm not running that meeting, but I have never felt like we were in a huge rush to be finished. Um, because we had a lot of time to really have discussions about what was on the agenda, what was going on. And a lot of times when we have staff meetings right after school from three to three thirty, that's it, you have thirty minutes. And, and at three thirty, you need to be done. And so I think for staff meetings, um, it's, it's much more beneficial. For trainings that teachers are conducting, like at the high school, we have Avid trainings, teachers are doing those. And, um, it's from the Avid site team and we show up at seven fifteen for an Avid site team meeting at the beginning of the month. And then we are expected as part of our site team to give trainings. So we have to figure out what we're doing and then we have to implement it. By doing that though, we have given teachers, um, again, those short strategies. We tried this in our classroom and this is how we did it, um, you could make a few tweaks and use it in your classroom. And then again, they have that small, um, strategy to go work on then for a month. And so I, I think when you, I look at it that way, when I break it down as how we're using the early release Wednesdays. But it's a hundred times more beneficial. Um, I've gotten so much more out of the early release Wednesday, Wednesdays the last couple of years than I ever did out of the full day trainings. It is, it, it's just a hundred times better. And the, the whole point of the early release Wednesdays is, is it's connected to students because the whole point is how can we better serve students? But it also, um, has much more to do with the teachers and their, um, training and their abilities to, um, serve those students in the classroom. And so if we, if we make changes to the day that we have it on, um, I think that we lose a lot, um, by doing so. We lose, I mean, I get what Mr. Gisansson is saying about, you know, if teachers don't have the energy to go to professional development, do they have the energy to, um, teach students? Yes, we do, okay? But the point is at some point, having taught all week, there is a good time to do training and there's a bad time to do training. And Friday afternoon is a bad time to do training. And, um, and so, um, if you're talking about the most optimal time, Wednesday works really well. It's the middle of the week, you have two full days, you have a shorter day, um, and then you have two full days. It, it really is the best time to do it. Um, I have a lot of teacher friends, um, both in Oregon and Washington, and nobody has professional development on Fridays. And I'm not saying that to, like, I have a friend in every corner or every district, but I'm not, but I am not. And so, um, but they, those districts either have an early release or a late start. And no, very few places have full day in service anymore. They have, again, early release or a late start, they don't have full days.
So just to be fair for the person who's not here, I do know that he has been arguing this point of his for three years. Since we had meetings in eighty A school. And I want to respect what the teachers want as well. He does throw out the idea half a year and I don't know if WHIWAM is just a problem, but it's three months, September through Christmas. We've put it on the calendar, parents know January it's gonna.
The problem with that is it's in the contract for teachers and the teachers are not willing to change it.
Aren't you at the same, I don't understand that part.
Same hours.
So right here, it says the district will provide time on designated early release Wednesdays for professional development. It's really clear about when that professional development is and so.
When do we redo that content?
This year, but I'm going to tell you right now, it would be a waste of the board's time to bring it up because I'm not, uh, the teachers don't want to change it.
I don't think teachers want to take that stance that if we don't do this, you know, we're not going to agree to anything, I don't think that works either.
I, I would agree that a hard line is pretty hard, but, um, this is for the benefit of teachers to improve students. And if teachers are the ones saying that this is what works best, I have a problem with not listening to that. And what, they are the experts, they're the ones who are in the classroom, who are working with students, this is for them to improve that money and so.
I want to respect that, but I also call you a member of the board who's helping direct the school in the, in the location. So I don't want to just put a wall up against him either.
It seems that any teachers have suddenly put a wall up though.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, so if the board of directors, if we vote to do a split, a fifty split, this is going to come around in negotiations again? Is that, is that what?
It will have to come up in negotiations.
So whether we approve it or not, it'll come out again.
So then why are we even talking about it if we can't do anything about it?
So, so what's interesting to me about this.
Why are we even here? Is in, is in the negotiation, so I'm, I'm not sure if we want to.
We, we've kind of heard both, I mean, he brings up still four days school week too, and I know we're past it for this year, but is that going to become a huge issue when we're negotiating the contract?
Oh, I wouldn't think so because that, because that's a whole different ball of wax. I mean, all kinds of things would have to change with that. Um, but with this current calendar, I'm just saying that it's in the CBA and so.
Which is about to be negotiated.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, we're not suggesting changing it between now and June, we're just saying, if we're going to discuss this, this is the time to discuss it.
What if we met in the middle and we tried it out for three months and four months, we went back? And we reconvene at this time next year and we said, or hey, you know what, people showed up. I was surprised. That's all I'm putting out there at all.
I'm now a little more can, like, interested in like, what about a late start Monday? And so that you, if your argument is that we need it in the middle of the week, the training so we can start implementing it during the week? Because teachers are, you know.
Done by.
Or forgetting what they learned over the weekend, I mean, I, I've never understood that, I have all my trains on Fridays, I mean, it's the best time to network and socialize and.
But that's not what we're doing at ours.
Yeah, it's different, yeah.
And we actually had an idea to do that last year and it got a hundred percent squashed because of this very idea.
So I, I mean, this is, was news to me, I think, maybe I missed it in the other meetings that the teachers are so against Wednesday? Because as a parent, it seems like Friday, your kids are burnt out, it'd be nice to send them home an hour early by Friday, because they're, they're ready for the weekend, you know? And so as a parent, I'm thinking, and then with all the, you know, not all the sports, but there are sports that, you know, are leaving, uh, you know. But I'm glad you're saying that, I'm just wondering if, well, maybe Monday is a better day to do that. You know, start fresh, you got some training, we're going to implement that.
But it's not that long, so.
I understand that, but it's about to be negotiated, so has, have we talked about maybe a Monday late start? After the weekend, everybody's dragging.
I have a question though. How, how did, because when we implemented the late start Wednesday, or the early release Wednesday, sorry, excuse me, the early release Wednesday. Did it have to be in, in the CBA?
I can try to remember how. The year that we negotiated, it got put in there because we really revamped and changed all the professional development. We went from.
One day, whole day to a, to a partial or whatever. Okay, is that necessarily like a negotiated item, do you think? I mean, as far as, um, professional development is concerned.
Professional development is, is, as far as it's concerned, it is.
It is a.
Because that's when the district is providing that time. And that's why it's in the CBA.
Okay, okay, so, okay, so that makes sense, okay.
But I think it got in there a year and a half after it was already rolling. I want to say it was the year that I did negotiations.
I would have, I would have to look back to see.
I can't remember, I remember doing it.
I think your problems are on.
I remember doing it, I just don't remember.
I want to say we went a year and a half without it being in the CBA.
So.
I guess, I guess, sorry Darwin, I guess my thought process is, is that, um. I, I think we're, the calendar comes after the CBA. In that whenever we negotiate for professional development and then you build your calendar in part by that.
Just like the hundred and ninety days and then you build the calendar on that.
Right, is, I mean, it seems like, are we putting the calendar first?
The chicken and the egg, yeah.
Or the CBA first, that's my question.
Calendar's on tonight, we haven't negotiated the CBA.
Right.
I mean, we can table this, but.
Well, but we can't really table it.
I've got to have, I've got to put a calendar out.
Exactly, so that, this is first and this is why it's so important.
Well, but the CBA goes all the way to June thirtieth of two thousand nineteen.
That goes back to my earlier point that we're not changing between now and June.
Between now and June.
I just don't see why it hurts to try it for three months.
The, the issue is scheduling and daycare for all of your kids. It's kind of an all or nothing, and I think that's the original point that Ruthann had was. If you put that you have the early release Wednesday in the contract and then you switch to a different day, you're violating your CBA. So you would have to put in there an either or language or something along those lines where, according to school board policy, we're going to try this for three months and then there's a possibility of changing to early release Friday. So that you're covered and you aren't rewriting contracts, you're not violating your CBA. It's problematic in that if we do this for four or five months and then, and folks get their daycare lined up for late start Monday or early release Wednesday or whatever. And then we switch it in the middle of the year, I think it's, it's a commitment to do it all for a year, one way or another. That would be my preference at the elementary level because of the daycare issue and scheduling and people having to take off work.
I just figured if, if it were out in August or posted online in June, you know, people know it's going to happen, so.
But we, but if we revisit it and we go, well, let's give it a few more months, I, I'm not being fair to my parents, it would have to be a hard and fast thing and I'm willing to commit one way or another, just because it's only nine months.
Same if we put it in writing specifically to Christmas and then we go back a hundred percent and then.
We still struggle to get people to pick up their kids on Wednesdays and we've been doing it for four years, we still have to make phone calls on Wednesdays to come get them.
We've moved past you, Corinne.
No, and I, I'm not, it's just.
Aldous is responsible for herself.
It's a middle of the day thing, so they forget.
The A Dale bus forgot to pick up the A Dale kids today. So I don't think, you know, we still have people that forget it.
I think, I think either you got to, I think what you, your decision is you got to do one or two per year.
I don't mind.
And the weekend, if, if you want to go early release Friday, you can certainly amend the calendar tonight to go to early release Friday, then we can reconfigure it. But in my research, my, you know, uh, talking to every single staff member and everything, and of course I produced, you know, the information in the last packet that you read. And I wasn't trying to sugarcoat or politically motivate or anything else, I just reported you what was said to me by the vast majority of the staff as far as, you know, the early release Friday versus early release Wednesday or vice versa, so.
I don't have a problem with Wednesday, I have a little problem with the fact that I, now we're not going to get a contract if we do something. I think people have gotten used to Wednesday, they may not like it, but they're probably more likely to pick their kids up on Wednesday. On top and maybe try and figure out if you're going to do it on Friday.
They might miss them Saturday mornings.
They'll miss them before that at the elementary level, I guarantee it.
So I'm fine with the Wednesday, you know, I'm going to go back to, I still want two weeks at Christmas, but I agreed to it last week.
So my only last point is this, but I, I like when I'm making the decision to have more data, like actually, for me. To, I, I remember reading your comments from, that you gathered in your report. So this isn't a complete blind side or anything that, you know, all the teachers are against this. It's just, I'm, I'm also wondering like, obviously, teachers have to take time off, they got things that they're doing and so. And then our students absenteeism, like, which days are we talking about? Is Friday the day the kids miss the most? I mean, that should be able to be shown, I mean, a simple table really quickly that says, bam, we, you know, fifty percent of the day is around Fridays, forty is on Mondays and then the rest is, you know, and that's a high number, but.
I'll let the principals speak to that.
And then same with, but then also same with our, our teacher, which, which days are our teachers missing the most? And is it Friday and is this mandatory, you know, showing that they're at these, it's time they have to make four out of the five, you know, certain percentage of these teacher in service days? I mean, certainly they're missing some Fridays, or Wednesdays right now and not coming in on a day off.
I don't have data, for you honest, but, um, this is my fifth go around being in a different school or a different district. From being a teacher to being administrative and this is easily by far, just anecdotal, but don't keep track of it. My best staff attendance at staff development, easily, easily by far my best. Not much goes on on Wednesdays. The one thing that is scheduled on Wednesdays and I didn't know this is FFA is scheduled on Wednesdays. All your FFA activities, not all of them, but a lot are, and I asked Christie Reese last week, why is that? And she goes, because a lot of schools do early release Wednesdays in our area and so we decided to do it Wednesdays. So, you know, other than that, my staff development this year was probably the best I've ever had as far as percentage of staff members. And for me, it felt like we got good things. I've done full days, I've done half days, um, we do, like, one district in my own, we did an extended schedule where we picked Fridays throughout the year to, to do it. But our Fridays were district basketball, district volleyball, state basketball and volleyball, where we had huge attendance rates. And we tried to have a staff development, half of us were gone because we were either mandated to be at it as principals, teachers and ADs, or we were there to watch our kids, or we were the coaches. The Wednesday deal works really good, I'm curious about a Monday deal, but I like the Wednesday deal because you come to school on Monday, Tuesday, you prepare, you make sure you have it. Wednesday, it's solid, it goes and we run it and you do it on Thursday and Friday. Also, Wednesdays, we do our, um, we do two different study halls, one's an ELL study hall and one's just a regular student study hall. On Fridays, I don't know how many kids would stick around for a study hall, they would just leave because we are truly done.
I'm willing to try something different, but I agree with Lane in that if we have a Friday staff development and that's a day that those teachers have, um, an afternoon where they can travel easier. Because we have limited subs and that's not something that's addressed in this, uh, letter, is that our, our teachers are very conscientious about not being out of the classroom and not, and, and be conscientious of when we can get some. So I feel like I've done some really good things with some staff development, I've been able to move things forward because I've had good staff attendance on the Wednesdays. Maybe an early, or a late start Monday or a late start Wednesday would work. But Fridays, I don't see, I see staff taking those days because they're, they're not going to have as much student contact time on that day and they're going to go to those appointments and they're going to be gone watching their kids or go into the dentist's appointment or whatever. That's my concern about Friday as a day, right?
Okay. Do you guys have anything else?
We started the whole process, you know, um, Mr. Crock was kind of the one that came up the idea when this whole thing began. I did some, uh, well, first at that time I was the elementary principal, so I called a number of school districts as far as how this thing goes and what their thoughts were. It's quite a mix between districts who do late starts and districts who do early release. I think the one main one I called was Clamton County, Clamton County does a, a late start Monday. And, uh, and talking to the, I think I talked to the curriculum director at the time, I said, what's your, what's your opinion, you know? What works best for Clamton County, and I said, we're, we're thinking one way or the other. He said, well, you know, we do the late start, but he said, you know, we've heard negative comments over and over and over again that as far as the childcare issue first thing in the morning. That, you know, a lot of parents thought that the early release would be easier to handle the childcare piece, especially when they're running off to work in the morning than the late start. So that's, that's what I got from Clamton County School District. However, on the other side of coin, you know, I spent two days in, you know, Redmond last week sitting side by side with North Lake. You know, North Lake is a four day school week, North Lake is, and they do, uh, you know, they rotate some professional day Fridays in the four day school week. But even with that, North Lake does, uh, I think a two hour late start on Monday mornings. And, uh, they accomplish, you know, Mr. Kerr, who's the superintendent, he said they accomplished quite a bit with their late start there. I didn't think, you know, have the foresight to think or ask him about what his childcare issues are with the late start. That was a good question, talk to him about that. I don't believe Paisley does either one, Paisley intermits some Fridays throughout in their four day school weeks.
Well, like with the early release, the kids that need childcare probably need it from three to five or six anyway. So that is probably, they just have to figure out how to get that accomplished an hour earlier on those days. Whereas with the early release, or with the late start, I could see that being more problematic.
That's, that's the work of the town, yeah.
On the childcare, now the positive of that for the older kids is I could see that, that timeframe they have from the time that they get out. In their hour or so to go cause trouble before they go to practice, that gets rid of that in that regard.
So you're saying that Tuesday, you did do it in the morning, for sure.
Yeah, they're not going to go cause trouble late. That's it, lady.
There's been research on this too.
I think we leave in the consent agenda and we'd be done with it.
Okay, I think we'll have a work session to follow, we'll bring it back in and we'll do the discussion again, but I get, I guess I will ask you again, you know, if you want to give me my marching orders. Do you want me to pursue the four day school week with the calendar that I proposed to you at the last meeting?
Well, let's see if we get convinced by our speech.
Okay, well, you have speech this evening on four day school week, well.
I mean, I would like to put that in the public house and say about it, but again, I don't, I don't want it out there in hysteria. I mean, I had a friend several weeks ago ask me about it, so I don't want people to be like, you know, that's how this town works. So if we could just approach it, we're just talking, people.
Well, it'd be, it, it would be a month late compared to what my projected calendar is going to be, but you know, we do have, uh, our May work session, second meeting in May. No board meeting, it's all work session, to talk about handbooks, to talk about district goals. And we can certainly fill the calendar in that work session and continue conversation on that if you wish, so.
I thought a decision had to be made, Will.
They aren't going to make it, they're, they're going to make, make the decision.
But I don't think it's going to end with tonight for a few years, is what you're saying.
We're going, we're, we're going to go, we're going to go ahead and pass the current calendar through consent agenda this evening.
I mean, it's been three years going, so.
I'm talking, I'm talking about twenty twenty one.
Here's my opinion, if we want to start for whatever it's worth, if we want to start looking and researching the four day school week like we had talked about, um, you know, like doing extensive research. Like you guys have asked, which I don't have a problem for, but the May work session is not going to work out well. And the reason why I say that is. And the reason why I say that is, one, it's not going to give me enough time to do my research on financially end, even though we've discussed how that's probably not, not the why or the issue. So I would prefer pushing that back because we also have budgets to get through in May and June.
July, the July one, that meeting we have in July is usually a light.
I don't know when your guys' next work session meeting, I'm just thinking that if we're going to talk about four day weeks, then let it, you know, do our due diligence on this end of the world so that we can really sit down and have a discussion rather than bits and pieces, oh, come back, bits and pieces, oh, come back. That's just my thought.
Yeah.
I, I just think that we've already done the bits and pieces and it's been very, you know, kind of problematic in that area. But I think if we're going to research it to make a really good informed decision and/or accept it or not accept it, then I think we need to do some just, I mean, we need to do some digging and we need to do some research. And I think that's only fair to your principals. I know that probably be fair to me being that, like I said, I've got a budget to put together by next month. I don't, I don't have time to put all that energy in because it's going to take me a little bit to get, you know, financial stuff put together.
I'm just the fill-in, but I don't have a problem with it.
I'm just throwing it out there because I think we need to do due diligence on it before we just bits and pieces and throw it in July.
I would say July, the meeting in July with the elect officers is usually a lighter meeting. Or the first of August can be, and if you want to just kind of track what power we're looking, that's what I would say as far as really sitting down and.
Let me, let me look at, you know, our content, agenda, topics, everything, let me see if I can go into July.
Okay.
There's something that, and this is quickly a side note here on your calendar for next year, your board calendar that is. It's kind of a coincidence, I've had Lonnie talk to me, I've had Lane talk to me, I've had Susan talk to me about, you know, your meetings on parent-teacher conferences and I's. So I, I think next year, you know, we, we'd like to improve things a little bit. I think next year in November, we'll have one meeting in November, late parent-teacher conference evening open, so administrators can be there and you can be there. And also in April, we'll have one meeting in April and dedicate that evening to parent-teacher conferences, so. Anyway, there you go.
At the next month.
Thank you for your thoughts.
Morgan, I move on to our regular session.